Redevelopment Successor Agency, Colleksico Financing Authority. Meeting is now in session. Call to order at 7:02 PM. Madam Clerk,
Redevelopment Successor Agency, Collexico Financing Authority. Meeting is now in session. Call to order at 7:02 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Prochem Victor Legaspi.
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Tailinda.
Here.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon.
Present.
We have quorum.
Okay, at this time, please stand for the Pledge of Legions. City of Collexico mission statement. Together we pledge to fight and protect the institutions and services in a courteous and respectful manner. To improve the quality of life for all in our community or community. Viva Collexico! Okay, please remain standing. Pastor Frank Saswata, could you do this honors of the invocation, please?
Good evening. Mayor, city council members, and those that are present here this evening. I want to extend a most blessed and merry Christmas to you and your families. My prayer is that as you gather with your families, remember, Christmas is about the birth of our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen? I want to pray for our council and also for the citizens of Collexico. I want to read out of First Timothy Chapter Two. It says, "First of all, then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions or in authority, positions of leadership, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. For there is one God, and there is one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus, who gave himself as a ransom for all, which is a testimony given at the proper time." So as we pray, we are reminded that it pleases God. Amen? As far aheads, Father in Heaven, God, according to your blessed word, you are pleased when we pray for those in leadership. And God, we lift up our mayor and our city council members to you, Lord, that you would bless them, Lord. God, we believe that you ordained this position for them, Lord God. So we pray, God, that you would give them wisdom, and God, that you would guard their hearts and their minds. God, we also pray for the city of Collexico its citizens, Lord God. And again, your word, you desire that all people would come to know Christ. So Lord, we ask a blessing upon this gathering tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen?
Okay, you may be seated. Close session announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. City council received, we see direction on the items on today's agenda, but there were no reportable actions taken. Thank you.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Motion?
I second it.
Okay. We move on to presentations. We have item number five, Red Zones in Collexico. California laws, city ordinances, and solutions to improve traffic for emergency vehicles, street sweepers, and trash trucks. Chief, please.
Good evening, Honorable State Councilmembers. Today, I bring a presentation on red zones, more so for explanation as to what they are, what they're used for, and their purpose of, and how to obtain those red zones. Obviously, we've all seen red zones. They're usually put at intersections or places where, to allow emergency vehicles to get through, large vehicles, usually at intersections in front of fire hydrants. They allow access to street sweepers and trash trucks. So, obviously, what the background on this is, they're designated as parking to prohibit unobstructed access to those vehicles. They're governed under Vehicle Code 22-500 to 22-526, which authorizes local cities to regulate those zones. How do you get a red zone in your neighborhood? That's one of the questions I was asked. So first, contact your local police department. We're the first step in the process. So you contact the police department, you speak to one of our representatives, and state your complaint. Next thing is you're going to do a written request stating your reasons why you want the red zones or your safety concerns. The request is taken by the police department and then is done a review, and which could lead to site visits, seeing what the issue is, to try to mitigate it or come up with solutions. If a red zone is deemed to be necessary, the request is then forwarded to Public Works, who then applies the red paint and adds the red zone. So some of the laws that, like I mentioned, apply to red zones, like I said, 22-500, which restricts certain areas for the red zones to be put, crosswalks, like I mentioned, intersections, and other places where traffic will be obstructed. 21-458 in the vehicle code, which basically gives local jurisdiction the authority to establish and mark red zones to manage parking and stopping, and 22-507, which allows local authorities to create ordinances and restrict parking to facilitate public services. Currently, in the city of Collexico, we have three ordinances. It's 10.24.030, which is the prohibited stopping places, 10.24.90, which is the no parking zones, and then 10.28.220, which is the parking meter zones on state highways within the city, and has to be approved by the Department of Transportation. Issues identified, as obviously like we mentioned, obstruction to emergency vehicles, large vehicles in the area and in commerce due to illegally parked vehicles or, you know, so that way they can't get through. Some of the other stuff that we identified was not, no proper signage, or the signage is faded or has been taken off. And of course, there's insufficient enforcement at times because of manpower shortages. So proposed solutions, repaint, maintain clear visible red zone markings, install no parking signs in the areas frequently obstructed by parked vehicles, public awareness campaign, initiate programs to inform the residents and businesses about the importance of red zones for city services and the penalties for violations of those red zones. Obviously, increase enforcement, obviously, air parking enforcement to increase enforcing the red zones to clear up intersections and clear up prohibited places, and adjusting street sweeping and trash collection schedules. One of the issues that we, or one of the solutions that we could do is, if we know there's an issue with trash trucks not being able to get in there, we could put maybe no parking for a couple hours, so that way it allows the trash truck to be able to pick up the trash and leave, but still allow the public to park in those, along that curb the rest of the week. And another solution could be residential parking permits. As we're getting into a phase where we're adding a lot of ADUs in the city, obviously, that's going to increase the amount of vehicles that are parked on the street. Something the city can look into is parking permits for the residents, where you're issuing so many parking permits per the residence with the attached number, so that way they can park in the streets, and that way we can enforce, you know, vehicles that are parked outside. Several cities do this to try to mitigate the parking issues in their towns. Obviously, the fiscal impact in this, to repaint the signs or to re-put signs, repaint curbs, is the fees as far as for materials and the enforcement. So that's my presentation as far as for red zones. If the city council or mayor have any questions, I'm available.
So, in the backup information for the presentation, maybe in the future, a possible creation of an application and a policy to formally adopt, and maybe even the creation of a traffic commission, or have the police commission act as a traffic commission to entertain any applications related to traffic issues within our city. Other cities do have traffic commissions, and also other cities do have different commissions acting the capacity of the traffic commission. I think that police commission could act in the capacity of a traffic commission to hear these requests from our community and be able to either, you know, do action to approve applications or requests, and then maybe even create a potential funding mechanism for these types of issues or mitigation measures we need.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other council member wish to speak? Okay, thank you, Chief. At this time, I would like to go back to the approval of the agenda because I asked for a motion. I have motion to approve. Any second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Prochem Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tailinda.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to public comments. Public comments not to exceed three minutes. This is a time for the public to address the city council on any item not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The major, the mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Group commentators may be requested to limit their group comments to fifteen minutes. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. If the item you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comment when we get to the item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. Okay, at this time, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Assemblyman Jeff Gonzalez?
Assemblyman Jeff Gonzalez, your representative for the state. It's my honor to be here, and I wanted to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak for three minutes. My hope is that in this new season of Collexico, we will be able to take it to new heights, to new places, and most importantly, working together to find a way to have Collexico thrive. I chose Collexico as the, this is the first city that I'm making public comments in, and I did that on purpose. There were two folks that brought me to Collexico, and, you know, I visited the entire district from Needles to Temecula, down here to Collexico. And Mr. Solano and Maritza Hurtado pointed out Collexico. And I said, "Man, this is where I want to start. This is the place that needs representation." And I come here to say I want to represent Collexico, and if there's something that you need, please, by all means, all you have to do is ask. Like my dad said, "El que no habla no come." So all you have to do, you have my number, is reach out. And I'm here for not only you, but for the residents of Collexico, Imperial County in the 36th Assembly District. So you got a fighter in Sacramento, and I'm looking forward to collaboration, working together, and ensuring that we plant the flag of victory right here in Collexico so we can model that for all the cities across the district and throughout California. So thank you for your time. God bless you, and all you got to do is call.
Thank you, Assemblymember. Okay, any more public comments?
Griselda Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Griselda Gonzalez with the Collexico Police Officers Association. On behalf of CPOA, I want to congratulate each one of you on your campaign. The community's voice was heard. Each one of you was chosen to continue in leading the city of Collexico into a brighter future. A future where we can all work together in good faith to maintain a safe and prosperous community. The CPOA would like to extend a warm invitation to each one of you to sit with us and get to know one another. CPOA newly appointed Vice President, Mr. Ranjel, will be reaching out soon to you via email. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Yolanda Cunningham.
Buenas noches señores del concilio y a cada uno de los presentes aquí. La primera petición que vengo a hacer en nombre de las residentes o de la mayoría de los residentes de Bravo Robiles, donde habitamos nosotros por más de yo por alrededor de veinte años, es que se nos agregue, por favor, a la próxima agenda para poder nosotros exponerles a fondo cuál es la problemática que estamos teniendo por muchos años en esa área. Se los vamos a agradecer infinitamente. Confiamos en que ustedes van a tomar las decisiones correctas y van a apoyarnos. En este problema que estamos teniendo, pues, aproximadamente en el 2017, a finales de 2017, estuvimos viniendo bastantes residentes del área para hablar y decir lo que estaba pasando en el área sobre ese parque. Desde un principio no se hizo lo correcto. No entendemos, no sabemos qué fue lo que pasó o en qué momento. No se siguió con lo que viene siendo el plan original. En este punto ahorita los residentes estamos muy consternados y preocupados porque no sabemos quién tomó la decisión. Bueno, sí sabemos porque ya lo investigamos, pero no entendemos por qué no se nos notificó a los residentes que estamos pagando un CFD cada año. Y nada más para dejarles saber, los residentes aportamos para el mantenimiento de ese parque alrededor de 219 mil dólares por año. Allí están las constancias. Les vamos a pedir, por favor, que de verdad nos ayuden, de verdad hagan lo correcto. Nosotros invertimos en nuestras casas, es nuestro patrimonio. Entran concilios y se van concilios, y no nos han ayudado. No sabemos dónde está el dinero, no sabemos qué han hecho con el dinero por tantos años. Si en estos tres últimos años se han juntado un poquito más de 600 mil dólares, ¿dónde está el resto del dinero? O sea, realmente quizá sea difícil remover lo que están diciendo que ya se instaló, pero nosotros no nos tomaron en cuenta. No nos tomaron en cuenta. Y de verdad solamente queremos un parque que sea un parque para todos, un parque donde sea, un parque donde podamos ver a los niños jugar, a los jóvenes adolescentes jugando básquetbol, jugando béisbol, y jugando soccer. Todos queremos un parque que sea para todos porque muchísima gente de Collexico va a esa comunidad. Entonces, yo confío, yo confío en que ustedes por fin van a escucharnos y nos van a dar la oportunidad de explicar bien a fondo esto porque nosotros no queremos llegar a ninguna otra instancia, porque no es necesario hacerlo.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Okay, la invito a que se quede para el tema 21. Aja, referente a eso.
Alejandra Guerrero.
Buenas tardes. Bueno, mi nombre es Alejandra Guerrero. Estoy también residente de Victorias. He venido algunas veces a platicar sobre mis inquietudes. Una de ellas, pues, eran los topes que ya se aprobaron, y sigo agradecida porque se hayan aprobado. El hecho de que también estoy aquí, pues, yo solicitaba un tope por mi calle, no exactamente en mi casa, pero sigo inquieta. Tengo mi niño con autismo, tengo mis dos niños con autismo, pero es uno, él se escapa. Y tengo vecinos aledaños que también son niños que salen. Y por más seguridad que tú tengas y pasadores y estés atenta, pues, en esa calle pasan muy, muy, muy recio. Entonces, este, me gustaría que igual se tomara en cuenta, este, la petición que estoy haciendo. No es porque yo quiera o por capricho mío querer un tope por mi calle. Es porque yo veo la necesidad de mi comunidad, que es lo que está, que es lo que requiere. También quiero comentar sobre el parque. Ahorita estamos juntando nosotros por decisión propia, este, firmas para que, por favor, este, nos tomen en cuenta y se haga una cancha de básquet y una de tenis. El plan original, este, estaba ahí compuesto por dos canchas de tenis, hasta fuentecitas como estaban en el mall. Lo único que estamos pidiendo, pues, es que se respete el plan original. Igual como dijo la señora Cunningham, a nosotros no nos pregunta... a nosotros no nos preguntaron si queríamos canchas de béisbol. Lo único que estamos pidiendo es que haya un equilibrio en nuestro parque porque la señora tiene tiempo queriendo una cancha de fútbol soccer y tampoco la tiene nuestros adolescentes. Al momento de yo juntar firmas, me encontré que los adolescentes tocan las puertas pero de una manera tan impactante y tan recio que se asustan las personas que están dentro de casa, y son jóvenes que no tienen que hacer. Son jóvenes que empiezan a aventar objetos, a la mejor, a las ventanas, porque no hay deporte. No hay un lugar. Tenemos dos canchas de básquetbol en todo Callexico. Por eso les hago, por favor, la petición de que nosotros tengamos ese espacio. Algunas personas me decían a mí, "No, no creo que se haga." Otras no me abrían la puerta. Otras se portaban de una manera de que, "Bueno, te firmo." Pero yo tengo la esperanza de que esta vez, en este concilio, se tomen decisiones y que en verdad nos tomen en cuenta y que en verdad sí se agende porque somos bastantes residentes. Y como dice la señora Cunningham, pagamos bastante desimpuesto y no sabemos hacia dónde se va ese dinero que pagamos cada año. Mire, vuelvo a mencionarles algunas peticiones que he hecho sobre ese parque. No tenemos botes de basura.
Muchas gracias.
Dos botes de basura para todo el parque. Sé que se acabó el tiempo.
Ya se acabó el tiempo.
Gracias.
Luis Pacheco?
Luis Pacheco, IID Director, One One Seven Ninth Street, Callexico. And I'm here just to bring you up to date with a little bad sad news. But we had a little meeting yesterday, and if you've seen the paper, we're looking at raising the cost of the possibility of raising the rates. So, it's sad to say, but facts are facts. They did a very good study. And actually, we are paying seven hundred and fifty-four point nine million just for service. But what we receive in revenues is only six hundred and fifty-four million. So, we are roughly one hundred million dollars short every time. Every year, we're going to have that minus revenue. So, it needs to be looked into and phased in. We're going to phase it in increments so that we can reach our goal. We are no longer going to have that cost that we have been used to. It was called an ECA cost. And that cost was in your bill. And that bill, that little cost, was buying us energy for the summer. So, when we were short in the summer, money came out of that fund to pay for our electricity for the summer. It's a big, big job to find energy during the summer. When we're short, we have to go buy energy. And that's one of the concerns that we have. And we want to stop doing that. We want to make sure that we have enough money to generate our own energy and fix our generations, fix our turbines, have everything ready for us so we don't need that expense. And this is what's been factored in. So, las malas is that, yes, we're going to have to be looking at future rates going down. But we'll have town meetings, and we're going to meet with individuals and citizens during this January period. So, we're going to come back to this topic in the twenty-first of January. But prior to that, we're going to be meeting with people. The inflation is at one hundred and seventeen percent. It's just... Garena del Sol is nine ninety-nine, eleven ninety-nine. Todo sube, everything's gone up, except us. We haven't raised the rate since 2015. So, that is our challenge that we're meeting. So, if you haven't, if you didn't meet, it was out today. So, there should be some out there, and it does some explaining. But we're going to do town hall meetings and get everything to speak. So, I leave you with that. And congratulations on your campaigns, and good luck to all of us. And one of my first meetings. So, we'll be coming back and informing you anything that's coming up with the IID in the district. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jesús Solano?
Good evening, community. Good evening, Madam Chair, council members, staff. Jesús Solano, four twenty-six, Rosemont, Callexico. I'm here with some suggestions and recommendations. The community of Callexico is still waiting for the forensic audit on the water department. Okay, so, like it or not, this council is going to have to address it. Okay? My next suggestion is you must put a freeze on any salary increase until you make a full assessment and find out exactly where we stand. You cannot keep giving salary increases if you have not made a complete audit. Okay? My other recommendation is... I've been bringing it up quite a few times. We need to repurpose some funding from Nosotros Park to Rodriguez Park. We have allocated and obligated one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Rodriguez Parks. That's not enough, okay? Now, Nosotros Park was allocated half a million dollars. There's not much that can be done with half a million dollars to Nosotros Park. So, we're going to have two parks halfway. My recommendation is to repurpose some funding from Nosotros Park so we can kind of have a half decent park where we can have an ADA walkway from the parking lot to the concession stand, from the concession stands to the dugouts, and enough funding to repurpose the basketball courts and the tennis courts. Okay? Now, we all know that that deadline for the ARPA funding is 2026, but for obligation, I believe it's at the end of this month, unless I'm mistaken. If you don't take action on this, come the first of January, you can't do anything. So, my suggestion is, if it's legal, add it to the agenda as an emergency item or call a special meeting for this purpose. So, it's up to you guys. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Miguel Solano?
Bueno, bueno, bueno. Miguel Solano, or Mike Solano. Tomás quería dejar saber que se va a empezar Lero League. Los baños de Alex Rivera, se los robaron four, five months ago, I think, y no han hecho nada. No sé si ya lo tienen planeado de arreglarlo. El Rodríguez podía lo están arreglando. Muchas gracias por dejar el grupo el que tienen ahorita trabajando ahí. Y aparte, pues, vine, pues, soy trabajador de la ciudad. Tomás les quiero dejar saber unas cosas que pasan en el departamento. No sé si se dice aquí, pero lo voy a decir. Quiero que escuchen mi voz. So... El departamento de nosotros, que es a Public Works, hay mucho favoritism, all right? Hay mucha protección con cierta gente. Ya tienen que basta con esto, por favor. Hay mucha gente, hay mucha injusticia que pasa, y los trabajadores no lo reportan por miedo porque, Tomás, le creen a ciertas personas. Y ya, de verdad, ya tienen que parar esto porque no es bueno para la salud de uno. Ya basta, por favor. All right? This is Public Works Department. All right? Thank you.
Jesse Garcia?
We can hand you the mic, Jesse, if you want to just sit there.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesse Garcia. I am a resident of Callexico. First, I'd like to congratulate everyone up here, all the members. Many women I don't know yet, like the females here I never met before. Victor Legaspi, I've known for a few years. Very nice person, doing a good job. Lorenzo Calderón, Calderón, I know for a few years. We met, we met together since kinder, nineteen sixty-six. So, I know him since then. And when he was to be at the school board, I called him a few times of something that has to be done, crossing guards and other things. And as soon as I called him, I mean, I couldn't believe it. It took just probably a week where that problem was taken care of. So, I know he's going to do a good job here also. Okay, now, for where I'm here. Crumey Park. Crumey Park, I don't think has ever had a playground for the kids there. Never. You know, and the closest playground, I believe, is to the south at Cortez Park. So, whoever wants to use the playground has to go all the way over there. So, any kind of playground would be great right there at that park. A swing, slide, you know, a couple of things for those kids. So, also, Crumey Park has been, had a corral, like a vestiaña area, for many years. And it's only been used probably once or twice a year for a concert or a car show. But the rest of the year, it's just closed out to the public, which is pretty sad because it's the largest, you know, place for people to go in there and the kids play soccer or run around, just have a picnic. Well, it can't be done. Supposedly, I don't know if it's true. Someone told me that the fence was going to be removed. But I don't think it should be removed. I just think the gates should be left unlocked for the public to go in there. So, hopefully, that will happen. Also, downtown. Again, I went to downtown this Sunday morning. The trash cans, I mean, they're like in really bad shape. If you have me on, as a friend on Facebook, I took a picture of those things, of those trash cans. You could see the flies. Too bad you can't smell it, but you could see the flies, the smell if you're there. Ants in the trash cans are all broken up. We need to replace all those trash cans in downtown. They've been there for many years, and they're bad. The other one, I had also told the previous City Council, never did nothing, was the public payphones. They're all over downtown, probably twenty, twenty-five payphones. They don't work no more. They're full of graffiti. People use them for trash, to put their trash in. I mean, they're just an eyesore. We need, we were saying about making downtown beautiful. Well, we could start with replacing those trash cans and removing those payphones. Like, right here, see how there's one, but that one's clean. The other one... Oh, yes, a parking. We should set aside also a parking for motorcycles like we do for bicycles at Burger Park on Pauline Avenue. Motorcycles, I saw three motorcycles parked in one parking slot on Second Street. And, well, I think those parks should be used for vehicles. Motorcycles should have a separate parking somewhere around downtown area. Now, also, the gates in the alleys. Many merchants are leaving them open. You know, they should be able to click, lock those gates all the time. They're open, so, and there was a mess this Sunday. Like I said, I posted on Facebook those pictures. It was a big mess. And... Now, now going to Nosotros Baseball Field. The kids are playing there.
I'm sorry, I already gave you time and a half. Could you finalize your statement, please?
Yes, this was the last one. The kids are playing there, are five and under. They need to go to the bathroom. The urinals are very tall, electric and all. They can't. We need to either put those kids at another park where the urinals are lower or lower those, put some other kind of urinals for those kids. They can't. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
That's it, that I finished. Thank you very much.
Any public, more public comments?
Julio Rocha?
Julio Rocha, seven ninety-five AMV, Teo Mel Avenue, Callexico. Buenas noches, buenas noches a la audiencia. Pues venía a apoyar a Yolanda Cunningham. You know, aquí está un plano que cuando el developer recién construyó esas casas, sometió este plano del parque. Y quisiera que lo tomaran en consideración, por favor, que lo revisen porque sí está un parque totalmente diferente ahí a lo que el developer, que la ciudad aprobó. So, por favor, quisiera que lo tomen en consideración, verdad? Para poder, pues, que los residentes que están pagando sus taxis allá del Melrose Tech estén contentos porque como digo, estoy viendo aquí un parque totalmente diferente que la ciudad aprobó. Entonces, pues, por favor, tómelo en consideración y hagan un research referente a ello porque es muy importante, verdad? Y espero en otras juntas oír un poquito más de este tema. Okay? Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Arturo Medina?
Buenas noches. Buenas noches a todos los miembros del concilio y felicidades a todos ustedes. Me da mucho gusto porque tengo la sensación de que esta ciudad va a salir adelante del lugar en que nos encontramos ahorita. Y precisamente quería recordarles de que el día de ayer manejé por el Camino Bautista y está completamente deteriorado. Aparte de que ya parcharon algunos de los baches. Había dos vehículos que se les poncharon las llantas, se les tronaron al pasar por allí. Uno estaba en la pura esquina de Bautista y Jasper, adelantito. Y el otro estaba sobre el puente de Cole y Bautista. Entonces, necesitan reparación. Reparar una porción nada más, pero quedar un montón de baches todavía. El Camino Jasper ya ni se diga. Está completamente deteriorado. Entonces, son cosas que necesitan atención. Algo que también necesita atención es la basura que está por todo el canal, en la parte sur del canal de Bautista hasta la Walmart. Y qué bueno que estaba el señor Pacheco aquí porque, digamos, necesitan limpiar todo eso. Hay familias que van a caminar por allí. Hay personas que van a pescar. Entonces, esos lugares necesitan limpiarse. Venía a recordarles y venía a felicitarles también y que tengan una feliz Navidad.
Muchas gracias.
Carmen Estrada?
Buenas noches. Felicidades a cada uno de ustedes por su triunfo. Y al mismo tiempo, quiero darle las gracias al City Manager porque ha ido al llamado al que le hemos hablado para que vaya a ver los parques que tenemos en los que usamos. Y la verdad, es lamentable. Haremos la liga por una semana debido a cinco, seis sprinkles que estaban quebrados de hace más dos, tres meses. No vengo a criticar, simplemente gracias por ir y tomar atención a lo que estamos hablando. Se pagó el agua, pero acá el Quinti Andrade, este, no separó el agua. Tuvimos la final, que fue anoche, y jugamos en el lodo. Y lo hicimos porque los coaches, vamos a jugar. Reducimos la cancha porque pasó un troque que no es de aquí. Pero si tuvieron, nos hablaron que no podíamos, que tuviéramos cuidado porque iba a haber esta torre que iban a ser, verdad? El troque pasó y hundió todo, salió el agua. Y pues, nos arruina nuestros proyectos que traemos, la verdad. Y también quiero decirles que no se les olvide que también nosotros hemos venido a cada momento, año tras año, a pedir ayuda para un campo, único campo para soccer. Y lo que pasa es que todos no fuimos contentos. Vinieron papás, niños, porque se aprobó el dinero. Yo sé que el dinero se ocupó a los bomberos, está bien, excelente, porque es prioridad. Pero sí, ahorita es el momento que hay dineros en otros departamentos, que sí, se tiene que terminar la primera fase que fue soccer allá en el campo Córdoba. Igualmente aquí en el de Giver también se aprobó otro de soccer. Y con dinero, yo no entiendo por qué, ni con dinero han hecho nada. Yo no sé qué hacer y no sabemos. Yo estoy aquí pidiendo eso, pero la gente está como, para venir todos aquí a un caos, pero yo los estoy parando. Pero, por favor, no quiero que el año que entre estén todos aquí pidiendo ese campo. Lo necesitamos, tenemos ciento veintisiete equipos activos. Calixico tiene ochocientos y tantos niños, y les puedo dar documentos. De ahí del proyecto que está la señora, tenemos como trescientos jóvenes que están en la liga. Entonces, merecemos un campo, por favor. Estoy agotada y cansada, pero no me voy a dar para seguir viniendo aquí a pedirles. Como les digo, ya no habíamos venido porque se aprobó dinero. Giver, no han hecho nada. Nada en Córdoba. Estamos hablando casi de cincocientos mil dólares, no han podido hacer un parque. No se vale, señores, no se vale. Si no se escuchan, pero queremos acción ya. Gracias, con permiso.
Placa Morales.
Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor. Congratulations on your new position. I'm really hopeful with this new council that's now here in Calixico and look forward to being an extension to your council. I wanted to leave you with some things that I've been dealing with for the past seven years coming back to Calixico. I am a native from Calixico grassroots and a business owner in Calixico for the past seven years. So, we have laws here, correct? We have laws, and why do we have laws? For justice. We have to protect the injustice. We have to help, help bring together injustices. We have to stand up for each other. Give the people the power to make a difference in our community. In our city hall, we know there's a lot of broken pieces. You're now settling into your new positions as policymakers. But we also need to have trainings or meetings for the public on how, what is your process for the appropriate paperwork to complete projects here for the city hall when, for example, I learned the hard way on how to do TPUs when we're having events. Not everybody knows that, but I have been sharing that with other nonprofits. We also need to, to let's share our knowledge. We need to bridge with the younger generation. We need to be great leaders as city council members here, you guys are policymakers. We need to be really good listeners, we need to be approachable with everybody. We need to be patient, we need to be humbled. And don't forget that we, the people, are giving you the opportunity to make better policies in our government municipalities because you are policymakers. Okay? Allow us to help and guide you through the heavy lifting process. Get settled in and get ready for the journey. We all have needs and wants, let's not be judgmental. Let's move forward and leave our emotions aside. And for that, viva Calixico. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar Canizales.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches, gracias por el tiempo, Oscar Canizales. Igual, de la misma manera, vengo a hablar del Parque Córdoba. Estuvimos aquí en dos mil diecinueve, algo así, antes de que se empezaran los campos de softball o highball. Pues eso ya se hizo, ya está. Mi hijo el más grande, desde chiquito siempre íbamos al parque, jugamos un poco con lo que se podía. Para jugar básquetbol, pues veníamos a otro parque, y hasta la fecha. Y ahora mi otro hijo, el más grande, ya no, tengo todavía más hijos. Sigo moviéndome a otros lugares para poder jugar básquetbol. No hay un campo de soccer, que es de lo que más se juega también libremente, que puede jugar uno sin necesidad de una liga o sin necesidad de tantos niños. Uno se junta, patea la pelota, a gusto. Se necesita un parque que tenga un propio lugar para jugar fútbol y una cancha de básquet. Una cancha de básquet más no hace daño, al contrario, creo que ayuda mucho a la comunidad. Todos tenemos hijos que queremos que hagan deporte, que salgan, que respiren aire. Pero si no hay donde hacerlo, no es tan, a veces no es tan sencillo que yo venga y me vaya con mi hijo a buscar una cancha de básquet, de básquetbol. Se los agradecería mucho. Sé que sí se puede. Muchas gracias por el tiempo y felicidades a todos y feliz Navidad.
No more general comments. Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to city manager's report.
City Council, again, congratulations, reflection. First meeting, you know, you five, I'm ready to start with you guys. And we have the past few days that we, I guess, have been here in office. We've had several meetings already, long, three-hour, four-hour meetings, so it's in the works. I want to say thank you to the staff again. I know, you know, the change of scenery now, the left here, front, front and center, but thank you because they are a backbone of the community. I want to give a big thank you and kudos to Parks and Rec and Ms. Gerardo for putting together the employee appreciation luncheon on the twelfth of December. I think it was a really good, just all city employees there, having some time off and kind of enjoying themselves for an hour, whatever it was that it may be, you know. It was, it felt good to have that cohesive and, you know, working along with your, you know, other departments and seeing everybody together. I think it would be a kickstart to keep this going as, you know, Mayor Nori Comba has lots of ideas coming forward, and this should carry over on to the next year. I want to thank the community, the volunteer groups for doing the hard work that they're continuing to do. I did meet with Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Ibarra, and she just stepped out, she was sitting right next to Ms. Cunningham regarding Córdoba Park, right? So just an update on Córdoba Park. They are working on the irrigation, the trees, they put the grass in, landscaping, right? The park is getting built in phases. So I know the concern of the baseball field and the soccer fields, but they are still working on putting a basketball court on the area. They are still working on putting the soccer field there where, you know, where it kind of goes. So they are still continuing to work on the park, so it's not gonna open, I don't think, anytime soon, because they're still continuing to work on it in phases as we go. Just so they can get a heads up of where we're at and I've met with them. I think we're gonna continue to meet so we can share our ideas back and forth and just give them a timeline of kind of how the park came into fruition and what the CFDs are coming into play and where those monies are going as far as that park. And just being transparent with the community and my administration so we can continue working to meet and go and compromise at the end of the day. Meeting with GSA, I know Ms. Thailand had requested. We're super close on getting an encroachment permit for GSA, which is the port of entry modular that's gonna go on First Street and Heffernan here in the next few weeks. They want to start working on getting everyone out of the old port of entry pedestrian so they can start putting them into the new modular, so they can start the phasing of tearing that building down early next year. I want to thank the Davids for being in attendance, Mr. Aguirre, Ms. Salado from SCAG and ICTC. Mr. Aguirre reached out to me so we can have a meeting with Mr. Orozco regarding security issues once the new transit center comes into play here in the upcoming, upcoming months. I know Mr. Cardelón had, wanted me to give him an update on Caesar Chavez burnt building, which was the old Tortas and Beer, Tortas and Beer building. So they did start working on it this week. They are moving all the environmental asbestos and everything from the building, so the completion of the project should be estimated to be completed January tenth, for that whole area to be cleaned up. And you already had mentioned to me some ideas that you think can come into play as to how we can beautify that area with gravel, rock, whatever it is that we can move forward after it's cleaned up. Touching up on Rodriguez, Nosotros, there is money that is allocated for Nosotros, which Mr. Solano has said, you know, it is allocated for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It has to be spent by twenty twenty-six. So coming into next year, we can reallocate by amending the budget and creating the paper trail, moving it from one budget to another budget, right? So, but it does have to be spent by twenty twenty-six. So there is about four hundred and ninety-ish thousand dollars in Nosotros Park, which I had a walk there with Mr. Solano a few weeks back, maybe a week back. And that park obviously would need a lot more money than, than those, right? Which kind of, kind of go with what currently I'm going on to my next one, which is Rodriguez Field. I had a meeting with Ms. Gerardo, Mrs. Falomir. Also had a meeting with Mr. Solano, Roldán, Mr. García, Mr. Cardelón, Mr. Legaspi about areas that Rodriguez can do. So on December eleventh, IBEW, which is the Electrical Union, came into the city to do electrical work on the old concession stand. They did turn in their permits and their vouchers and all the paperwork to Ms. Falomir. There's been communication with the volunteers to get that work done. And then the carpenters union also came in to assist us with their free labor. There was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated to Rodriguez Field already, so some of those monies was used to buy the material for the concession stand, which the laborers needed. So I want to give a big thank you to the ad hoc, Ms. Ureña that's sitting back there, for getting these things going, getting these talks going with Ms. Gerardo, because it does, you know, there is a chain of command that should be followed, and we discussed that already. But I want to thank them for getting that park moving along, and hopefully we'll see some progress here in the next future for Baybrook or Little League, or Baybrook that they play there. I want to congratulate and welcome Mr. Juan Fonseca, a new PD officer that was sworn in on Monday, Monday. You will see a lot more presence of council, the mayor wanting to be here, right? Because they want to do change, they want to, you know, welcome all new members. I know there's another one, Mr. Quaya, that's gonna be sworn in on the third of January. So we're gonna welcome another officer here in the next few weeks, and hopefully we'll have a sworn in. I know the fire guys are doing testing for engineer and captain, so hopefully those will finish up here this month or next month. I want to, I met Mr. Willy Castillo, Kids and Badges. They were catering the officers and all the volunteers that helped out. I think that was a great event from the police, that's twenty-one years in the making. That's, that's, that's pretty awesome to have PDs so involved with the community, and now they ended up introducing teams and badges, right? And they took high school students to the Grand Plaza. The Grand Plaza also donated some of the proceeds to the children along with PD. They did a two hundred dollar shopping street, I think that was pretty awesome. But getting back to Mr. Willy Castillo, this gentleman is a owner of El Jumping Bean, at the old donor shop on Highway ninety-eight, next to El Sol Market. Their business finally got proven up and running, and I did reach out to him, and he will be reaching out to us and council when he opens, because he's inviting everyone to do an opening ribbon cutting of El Jumping Bean right there next to El Sol Market. So congratulations to him. Come on.
And you have a meeting tomorrow regarding Chick-fil-A?
And I have a meeting tomorrow with Chick-fil-A, it's in the works. We'd had a meeting as well, we got new renderings for the Giver project, because I know it's, it's, it's in the making, it's moving along. We did end up getting renderings for the Giver project that we actually discussed with Mr. Jeff González, right? Because you come into town, then we're gonna walk out with a bunch of ideas that we need and wish list. But we did get rendering, so those talks are, so hopefully, let's do it already. Oh, the sidewalks, they've been working on sidewalks throughout the city, because there was some concerns of ADA sidewalks or not, so they have worked on the sidewalks.
Don't forget Wingstop is coming also.
Wingstop is also coming in the area of, for less, Starbucks area right in front, so welcome them as well.
Okay, thank you, city manager. Next on the agenda is the commissioner's report, however, we don't have any active commissions at this time. So we will move on to city council comments and reports of meeting attended. Mayor Prota, Legaspi.
Thank you, Mayor. Definitely, I've been attending quite a bit of meetings, especially regarding to the Córdoba Park and the Gutierrez Park issues that they got going on there. And like the city manager said, he's gonna go ahead and correct some of those things and work on it. There's always, we're probably gonna definitely have some form of a town hall meeting regarding that matter. Also, I attended the Kids and Badges event. There was approximately, how many kids? Thirty, about thirty kids. They went out to, they met Santa Claus and the Grinch. Santa Claus and the Grinch had a fight. Simulated fight, and Santa Claus won. Santa Claus ended up handcuffing the Grinch and took him to one of the units. And the following day, they had the first annual Teens and Badges. Good job, guys. Took about twenty teens to, twenty-three teens to Grand Plaza, so thank you, Caesar, the management of Grand Plaza for making that happen. And other than that, the mayor and I attended the Officer Juan Fonseca's sworn in. So we have a new police officer, another one that's coming in. And also today, I would also like to give a shout out to Las Palmas. They gave over a thousand toys to kids today, this morning, and Santa Claus was there, and also a singer that portrayed Selena. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Prota, Legaspi. Councilmember Thailand.
Good evening, council members, members of the public and staff. Just continuous meetings with community members. I too, Mr. Jesse Garcia, drive downtown, and the city manager hears about all the things that I see, and we're collaborating to find ways on how to better downtown and beautify it. We had the opportunity to meet with Jeff González and discuss a lot of things that we think are priorities, Madam Mayor and I, and the city manager, and that was really awesome. So hopefully, in the near future, we can share any traction or movement on what we're working on with our local representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Thailand. Councilmember Marquez.
I have been speaking to a lot of the people involved in our parks with Rodriguez Park and the building of that, reconstruction of that park. And I kind of echo in with Mr. Solano's recommendation in regards to the funding for those parks. I feel that we do need to reallocate the Nosotros funding so we can at least have one beautification and completion of one, one specific park. Because I don't think we have enough funds to complete one or the other. So I do want to bring that up to council, that we think about probably having that. And other than that, we were invited to the reorganization of El Centro, Madam Mayor and I, and it went well. We were able to speak to a lot of other community members, and we're in the works for now our commissions into helping the homeless population and talking about that and how to alleviate the homeless population from downtown Calixico, to making sure that we're able to clean up downtown and provide a good and healthy environment for our businesses to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Marquez. Councilmember Calderón. Thank you, Councilmember Marquez, Councilmember, um, Calderon.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. This is our first week we're sitting here as chairs. The more I dig, the more I ask myself, why am I here? But I can assure you that, um, things are being talked about, things are being, uh, looked into. I see a lot of fellow faces here talking tonight, as I saw when I was campaigning. I can assure you that your comments and your concerns will be heard and will be followed up. I'm not going to sit here and say I'm going to promise everything, but I'm going to make sure that everybody gets their check of what they're looking for and what they're finding and improve. We're in the process of filling very, very important positions for the city. Those, uh, positions that are required to make a city function. Tonight, you'll see some on our agenda, and hopefully, pretty soon, we'll see more of these vacancies filled, so we can get Callexico back on the ground. Um, yes. The last thing that I've asked, and I've asked all my peers here, that we need a retreat. And a retreat right away, and the retreat is where we meet as a council, as a team, and set our priorities for the city. Not only the priorities, but the goals. Not only short, but long-term goals, because everybody wants things done, but we've got to prioritize what is important. We have some items tonight for our poli-, uh, Fire Department, long overdue. And I'm a firm believer that you perform like you train. And when you have training and you have the proper equipment, you will respond and take care of the problem, um, when we need them. So again, there's a lot of things that we have to look at. There's a lot of funding that is still questionable, but it's only been a week. And hopefully, after this retreat, we'll be able to have some type of direction for you as citizens and let you know where we're headed and why we're headed that direction. Because, let's face it, this city does not have the funding. And there's a lot of more things that I'd like to say, but it's not the time to say it. But if we're going to work, we've got to work as a team. And hopefully, within ninety days, we can give you a report as to what we have accomplished. And I know some of your areas are important. I know you, they're volunteering, put a lot of time into, uh, for example, Jesse, Tonio, Mr. Solano, Rodriguez Park. That is important. That is because it's our children that are at stake here. The restrooms in the Little League, that should never happen. Someone should actually be going and checking these things, making sure they're functioning, so when our kids go to play, they're safe and they can use the facilities, not only them, but also the parents and whoever joins them for those games and practices. So, all I ask, if it's an opportunity to prove to you that you are going to make a change in this place, go. Thank you, and...
Thank you, Councilmember Calderon. Okay, um, we all started off busy. Uh, so I want to let you know a little bit of what I've been working, um, for the last week since I have the honor of being appointed the mayor. So I've been in contact with County Supervisor Escobar, who is our representative, and we're going to start setting up meetings, um, to discuss a, a, a permanent, um, uh, plan, proposal for, uh, something to do with the homeless population, not just for Callexico, but at the county level. Um, so, which is why he's involved, and we plan on getting different, um, departments involved as well as, uh, committees that that are tasked with with those, uh, with that, uh, situation and also with other council members here and our law enforcement as well. So that is in the works. Um, I attended last night a town hall meeting, uh, that the Chief of Police, uh, presented. It was for parking meters, and it was also for a very good program that, um, our city will be participating in, um, pretty soon, as soon as the, the MOU is, uh, is approved. Um, and the best part is that it's free. So I'll tell you a little bit about that, and, but before I do that, I will say that we had absolutely no, um, attendance from, from audience, from, you know, the people from the community. So, um, I, I did, um, ask the Chief of Police to repost, redo another town hall meeting, look for other venues, because, um, I, I don't think the people are, it's not that they're not interested, especially the parking meters. I know that was, it was a big deal. So we have to look for other ways, um, to, to notify, um, the community of our town halls. Um, I do, so I'm, I'm not going to speak much about that, because that's, that's his thing. So when he does his town halls, hopefully you guys can attend, attend that, because we do want to get moving on that, and we do want the public's participation. But the other one, I'll tell you a little bit, uh, that I forget the name of the organization. What is it? N H I? Okay, so it's a nonprofit, um, organization that is coming out from here. It's, it's, it's already, uh, been working at other larger cities, um, throughout the state. And so what they are going to do, they are going to open Monday, actually, and that area where Heber is, where the, um, the old cannabis stores were at, by the A M P M? Yeah, by Prestige Event Center. So, um, they're going to open there. And what they're going to do is they're going to be receiving, um, it's going to be a detox center. So, um, anyone that, as it was explained before, was that, um, you know, back in the day, you would have to, if you arrested, uh, someone for, for public intoxication, uh, the county jail wouldn't take them, um, unless they were violent. Um, so, uh, so they would have to just cite and release. In this case, um, they are going to be accepting, uh, nonviolent, um, uh, people that are under the influence. And, uh, so they will take them, they will keep them for twenty-three hours and fifty-nine minutes to help them detox. And they will also start offering programs to them, um, to, for, you know, for whoever is, uh, is getting ready to transition and and getting back to, you know, getting off the streets. So they have very good programs, they have medical staff, they have security staff, and it's free. So it's really going to help us out, it's closer than county jail, um, so that starts on Monday. So, um, the, the chief is going to be working with them so that we can start, uh, working on the MOU, so we can start, uh, using them. So, uh, that was about the town hall meeting. So they are going to have another one for the parking meters. Um, also, if you haven't noticed, we have a bigger table here in the front, and we've invited our department heads to sit with us, because we want them to be present, um, and be part of this meeting. I, I see a few that, that aren't here, so unless they're on vacation, I expect them to be here, please. Because it's very important that not only do they participate, um, they also feel that they're part of the team, but they're also listening to the public firsthand. Um, so any concerns that they have in relation to your departments, then you're hearing it firsthand. And, um, so, you know, we expect that the notes be taken and the job get done. But thank you. Um, let me see. I also asked the Chief of Police to, uh, contact the, our I I D director, and good thing that he's here now, um, to, uh, see what we can do so that maybe you can help us with your general manager to give direction to the sheriff, to look into the homeless encampments that are, um, along the canal banks. There's plenty of them, there's at least five, six, seven, they're pretty big. Um, it, it, it's dangerous to them, they're next to the, the big canal, is that, what's the name of that canal? Is that the American, no?
Yeah, the All-American.
Yeah. And it just keeps, the population there just keeps getting bigger. You don't see them, because they're behind the canal, behind the old Toys R Us. But, um, uh, and there's also some encampments going on Coal Road, um, between the two empty lots on the Walmart side. You can see them, and they're also on, it appears that they're also on I I D property. Uh, people don't know that it's I I D property, so they think it's Callexico, and they think that we're the ones that, you know, aren't doing our job, but it's actually I I D property. So if you could help us with that, we'd greatly appreciate it. Uh, let me see. I also spoke to, had a meeting with the City Manager and the Chief of Police about graffiti abatement and about our stray cat problem. So, uh, for graffiti abatement, we are going to start, we do have a code, um, and it makes a property owner responsible to, um, paint their property, I believe, am I correct? So that hasn't been enforced, it's going to start getting enforced, but the only way that we can enforce that is if we lead by example. So I also asked the City Manager to get with Public Works, um, who's not here today, but she, uh, to get with them and let them know that, uh, we, we, they have seventy-two hours to paint any graffiti over any public property. Um, for a minute. The cat, the stray cat problem, um, I also asked the Chief of Police to work with, uh, Animal Control and see what we can do, and he offered some options, um, to, what is it called, neuter?
Spada.
Spada, at least so that they're not, um, reproducing. Um, let me see. I also contacted Sheriff Mayor Montes, um, so that we can initiate a, uh, a, a program on, um, an inmate cleanup crew for our city. So we're going to be, uh, meeting, um, early January to see what we can do and, um, how we could utilize those resources for, from his inmates, so that we can have a field day once a month or something, you know. Those in the military know what field day means, but you go out and you clean out, you know, the city, and you utilize the inmates, or maybe even, um, Chief of Police, if you can see what programs, or if we can get into a community service program with the courts, you know, when they have to do community service, and maybe we can start, um, having some of that assistance to clean, to help clean our city. And just to let you know, we're currently in the process of hiring some very important executive positions, and we've already, um, we're looking at, um, uh, going out further, um, so that we can get the best talent that the city deserves. And that's it. So, um, we now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. On item number eleven, we have Yolanda Cunningham.
Buenas noches de nuevo, mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham y resido en el, la calle Filmor. Eh, nada más yo quería preguntar, ya sé que estamos, están, eh, buscando nuevos empleados para que llenen las exposiciones que son importantes. Y yo solamente quería hacer una sugerencia y pienso que sería importante que en todos los lugares cuando uno aplica, la mayoría de los lugares se ponen a prueba a las personas por un año. Y viendo los antecedentes que hemos tenido aquí en la ciudad, pues sería importante que ustedes de verdad analizaran esa situación de, yo no veo ningún problema porque cuando, eh, cuando contratan a un empleado, ponerlo a prueba por un año. Creo que eso sería algo que se debería de considerar, porque ya hemos tenido la experiencia y hemos visto cosas que han sucedido, que han demandado a la ciudad. La ciudad ya no tiene los recursos necesarios para estar cubriendo ese tipo de demandas. Entonces yo creo que sería importante que analicen eso. Una buena persona, un buen empleado, que haga su trabajo, no tendría por qué tener ningún problema para ser puesto a prueba. Así es que yo por favor les pido que lo consideren y que realmente va, yo creo que van a evitar problemas en muchos de los casos. Eso es todo, gracias.
Thank you, anyone else?
No more comments.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, so we move to, um, consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailandia?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this time, I know you are not officially sworn in, but for the two new department heads, I'd like you to invite you to take a seat at the table, and you're welcome to leave whenever you want, because I know you're not getting paid yet. So, uh, for those of you who don't know, Mr. Coyne? You will be our new county director. Oh, do you want, would you like to say something, Mr. Coyne?
Day one.
And it's free because you're not getting paid yet.
Well, congratulations are in order for all of you, um, especially Madam Mayor for being selected for our city, especially at this pivotal moment. Um, I appreciate being entrusted with this position. I know it's a critical position for the city, especially during this time. And I look forward to working with this honorable council and the community, our, uh, City Manager and all stakeholders to implement your objectives. I grew up here, I have a vested interest in seeing this community flourish, as I recall it. Um, and so I, I want to be able to, um, be, um, in this leadership position as a catalyst for that sort of change and to foster economic development for the city, which I think is critical.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you for trusting me.
Okay, Mrs. Carlos Chaparral, your turn.
Good evening, um, Mayor and, um, Councilmembers. Um, congratulations to you as well for, um, for your campaign, for being, um, successful in that. Um, I just want to say that, um, as I stand here before you, you know, I want to say that I'm humbled and I'm grateful for the opportunity that you have given me to be the Director of Finance, um, for the City of Callexico. I also want to express my gratitude for, um, your placing your trust in me. And, um, as I step into this role, I want to, um, let you know that I worked diligently to uphold the City of Callexico's mission and that I pledged, you know, to lead with integrity and, um, um, transparency and purpose. So, um, I'm very excited. Once again, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm excited to be part of the team, and I know that great things are coming for the City of Callexico. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chaparral. Okay, now moving on to discussion and potential action items. Uh, item number, oh, do we, I ask first or read the discussion, I'm sorry? First, uh, okay. Item number twelve, Resolution Approving and Adopting an Amended Conflict of Interest Code Pursuant to the Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailandia?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon? Motion passes.
Okay, item thirteen, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Council, the City of Callexico, to enter into an agreement with Nichols Consulting Services. Madam Clerk, do I have any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, we have a presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So I come for you again today to, uh, bring a resolution authorizing, uh, City Council, uh, City of Callexico to enter an agreement with Nichols Consulting. So, as part of the functions of the Police Department, we do a lot of functions that are mandated by the state, like RIPA, DUI, Admin Per Se, and, uh, a lot of, uh, rape victim counseling notices, U visa, nine eighteen forms, and, uh, police officer personnel records. Um, a lot of these are refundable, um, expenses where the state has allocated funds to reimburse the, the Police Department for the extra time it takes to complete these functions. And so we went looking for, uh, a company that could facilitate the recapturing of these funds. Um, we reached out to the City of El Centro, we asked who they used. They highly recommended, uh, this company. We also found out that the City of Brawley also uses this company. So El Centro and Brawley are similar to the City of Callexico as far as, you know, law, sort of kind of as far as law enforcement, population-wise. Obviously, we're a little bit bigger than Brawley, but smaller than El Centro. And so we reached out and spoke with, uh, Nichols Consulting. Um, they presented us... They presented us with a service contract, and it's listed in the backup, a little bit behind Nichols Consulting. Mr. Andy Nichols has been working in the field since nineteen ninety-three, he started Nichols Consulting in March of two thousand four, again, like I said, he also works for the City of El Centro and Brawley. He estimates that, looking at our, what we've done, that we'll be able to conservatively bring back in about thirty-six thousand dollars in recouping some costs. Obviously, as part of the contract, there's a fee, we could either do at the city council's discretion either a fixed rate of three thousand six hundred a year, or a twenty percent revenue sharing up to a cap of five thousand four hundred. That being said, if we do reach that cap, we're looking at recovering a minimum of twenty-one thousand dollars, just for that five thousand four hundred, and we're looking at going back to RIPA from January, let me rephrase what, RIPA is the racial... Yeah, the Racial Identity Profiling Act, and that's something that we're, our officers, whenever we contact somebody, we fill out a card, we report it to DOJ, and it's something we're already doing now, so it's not gonna be any additional cost to the city, it's not, we're not doing anything different at the police department, but now we're gonna file claims with the state to get the reimbursement. And again, Mr. Nichols specializes in mediums to small-sized cities, so it's a perfect fit for the City of Calexico. Any questions that people aren't happy to answer?
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a comment. I think it's, I think this is very important, because, you know, you, there's a lot of entities here that we work with regarding to DUIs, RIPA, a lot of DOJ entities, and in the long run, like the chief said, it's gonna be cost-effective, I think it's a good idea for the short staff, and it's gonna work, it's gonna work well.
Okay, thank you, anybody else would like to comment?
No.
Okay, at this time, do I have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailandia?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon? Motion passes.
Thank you, now item number fourteen, authorize city manager to sign the service agreement for administration of claims with Sedwick Claims Management Claim Services, Inc., and the City of Calexico. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, city manager, were you going to make a comment on that?
Yeah, I was gonna give you an update, I provided everybody with a spreadsheet, I know we had agenda briefs all day yesterday regarding why this was brought to the council two weeks before the expiration date, right? And talking to Ms. Elizabeth from Sedwick, which is our Workman's Comp Claims Management firm that we work with, that we work with force from since we had JPIA in the city, so they've been longer than twenty seventeen, longer than twenty fifteen, so they've been here for a long time. So, I did have a conversation with her, like why we were coming to the council while I was bringing it to the council the last meeting of the year before it gets renewed, but there was some, some back history that, you know, maybe the human resources, the workload or whatnot was, it did circulate around her email maybe the middle of November, early November, to come to council for, for renewal. I also discussed with Ms. Elizabeth from Tagway regarding the contract, because we are proposing a four-year contract on the staff report, but they are willing to work with us on a yearly contract or a two-year contract that we lock in three percent rate, and then the option two more years after that, which is the four, would be a four percent rate, or we choose not to continue with the contract, are willing to work with us on a month-to-month basis, but just rest assured that if we do lose this Workman's Comp claim, then we're self-insured, we would have to go out and look for another firm, and that's gonna take some process in itself to get another insurance company to work on the thirty-seven open cases that we currently have going on right now with Workman's Comp. So, I did provide a little bit of backup for each council member, because that was discussed yesterday in the brief.
Okay, thank you, city manager. Do you have any comment, council members?
Yeah, I do have something. You know, Workman's Comp is probably the biggest expense that the city has. Not only is it the biggest expense, but it's expenses that have prolonged for years and years and years. Having talked to the city manager and thank you for Mr. Carr for educating me, it's as serious as some families not receiving their money when they should have received it five, six years ago. And I'm not going to further, because of respect for the family members and so forth. So, with that said, this company wants four years, I'm willing to go one or two years and put them on trial, because we have to get rid of these cases. These are our cases that our family members or our ex-employees deserve to be resolved. And some of them, they're really, I'm growing proud, there was something that just didn't, something that dealt with the crack. So, again, my motion is to give this company a two-year contract instead of four, and hopefully we can work something out, because they started this case and they should be these cases, and not in two years, we can look at getting somebody else to replace it.
Yes, sir, I can reach out to the firm tomorrow and go that route.
I mean, that's my vote, and that's based on being educated by, I mean, we have four outstanding cases that shouldn't even be in existence, so, and that's, that's what I...
Yeah, based on the backup information.
Councilmember Thailandia, we have a motion at the table?
Sorry.
Do we have a second? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second before we vote, then, or do I listen to discussion before we vote?
Correct, now we have a first and a second, and the floor is open for discussion on the motion before the...
So, the motion before us is to do the agreement for two-year versus four, okay?
I wanted to say that I'm in agreement, based on the backup information and from actually having worked here and seen some of the processes, I did ask for some information, the information that I got back was within the last four years, we paid out two-point-five million workers' comp claims, that's a lot of money, so we do need to be looking at what's going on, what's being processed, apart from the customer service aspect of it to our staff, so yeah, I'm in complete agreement with reducing the contract time.
Okay, anybody else have a comment? Also, before I vote, I would also like to say that I believe we were told that we have to renew by December thirty-first, or else we wouldn't have any services, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so is it possible to modify the agreement?
Well, I can reach out to them tomorrow and modify it to the two-year, because she's stating here that she is willing, they are willing to work on it.
She's willing to do it.
They are willing to give us a new proposal for two years, and then option the other two years depending on the work, right?
Okay, so just, so we have it clear as to what the motion is, is to continue with the same agreement, with the only exception that instead of four years, it would be for two years, okay? And the motion is brought by councilmember Calderon, and it's seconded by councilmember Marquez. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailandia?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, selection of our proposals for mural cycle number eight, and we have Mrs., I don't know her name. Let's hear your presentation now. Mrs. Carr.
Good evening. Back in July of this year, the city council approved the guidelines and the forms for the mural cycle eight. We got eleven proposals, there were two specific locations, one was the library storage container that is in front of the library, the second option was Crummet Park Restrooms, and there was an open space available for those artists who wanted to provide their own space. We got eleven proposals, four of them were for the library, five, six were for Crummet Park, and one was in the open space. We had a selection committee review them and score them, and they provided recommendation to the Community Services Commission. The commission met, reviewed their recommendation, they reviewed also the proposals, and after they review, what they are recommending to this city council is for you to approve "Daydream" by Mia Salinas for the library container space. Out of the eleven proposals, that is what the commission is recommending, and also city staff. This, if it's approved, it would be an expense of almost, a little short than six thousand dollars, that comes from the Art in Public Places Fund, it is not a general fund project, it is a general fund, which comes from development fees, and those are restricted to specific uses. I don't know if, Mayor, if you would like to take a three-minute break, see the proposals, or if you already have done that?
Yes, I think we want to step out and take a look at them, okay? Do we need to...
Art in Public Places, it's a development fee, a development impact fee. No, it's a development impact fee.
So, at this time, we're gonna step out, and whoever wants to also join us and look at the art, it's out in the front, so we can make a selection, is that what we're doing? Or we're gonna follow... Or we're going to follow? Okay, so we all have an opportunity. And at this time, I'm going to reread the items, selection of our proposals for Mural Cycle Eight. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And approving the recommendation, right? Motion to approve as recommended, okay? Do I have a second? Councilmember Thailanda, you were gonna second?
Yes, I second.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Victor Legaskey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailanda.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
No.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon.
I think at this point in Colexico's, we need to concentrate on the needs, not the walls. We have an epidemic with graffiti that we can't even control. So I would hate to spend money, and don't get me wrong, I'm not against art. I have relatives that are good artists and so forth. But this is not the time to spend money on something that we, I mean, maybe once we get the city back on our, on board, then we can bring in murals and so forth. Right now, we had Mr. Solano talking about not having a restroom because it was gone from Little League. I would rather see this money, have a survey and go through all our, what, thirteen parks? How many parks do we have, City Manager?
About twelve, thirteen.
Twelve, thirteen. Go and assess these parks. Change swings, change water fountains, or just the fact is bring trashcans in. We expect people to be clean, but we don't provide any tools to keep these parks clean. And that is why I'm saying over to this side. And that's all.
Anybody else? Okay?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item number sixteen. Adopt Budget Amendment Resolution for Fund Number Two Fifty-Five, ARPA, for reallocation of $100,000 from fire utility vehicles to purchase second set of personal protective equipment to meet NFPA standards. Were you going to say anything, City Manager, on that, or?
Would you like me to discuss it?
Oh, well, actually, Madam Mayor, do we have any comments?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Griselda Gonzalez?
Is it Madam? Madam Clerk.
Good evening. For item number sixteen, sorry, Griselda Gonzalez, CPOA. For item sixteen, for the purpose of transparency, I would like to recommend that item sixteen be tabled so all city council members make an educated decision, plus the fact that we have a newly appointed Finance Director that can eventually explain or answer questions of where the money is coming from for the sake of all public safety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, City Manager, at this time, would you like to make a presentation?
To clarify, where the money is coming from, this money is coming from ARPA, right? And it has to be allocated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and spent by twenty twenty-six. This money was initially allocated for PD, right? A few months ago, a month and a half ago, when Finance, Interim Finance Director Ms. Fonseca presented, turned out that that money was supposed to go to fire. Great, now I have 200,000. And being the acting fire chief as well, we did purchase one command vehicle in the summer, which the duration of my career has, the city has never, or the department has never had a new command vehicle. It was always, it's always been a hand-me-down from either, you know, Our Brothers in Blue, or Public Works, or forfeiture vehicles, which is the forfeiture vehicle sitting at Station Two, which is a utility vehicle. So with that being said, I did purchase a command vehicle that is currently being worked on. I had 80,000 for fire utility vehicle. It doesn't cost 80,000, it costs more because a police vehicle costs what it costs and about 60,000 to outfit it. So we have one vehicle getting outfitted. We purchased another vehicle using 100,000 of this 200,000 to make a QRV, which is a quick response vehicle that we're going to outfit as well. We got the vehicle at the lowest bid. Now we're going to spend 35,000 to outfit it with lights, camper show, all the stuff that the department needs. I don't need to spend another 100,000 on another vehicle that's just going to sit there. I want to make a smart purchase. And a smart purchase is PPE that the guys are needing, right? And I want to thank Ms. Rianza and previous administration for having purchased a set of turnout gear, I believe, last year. But what the community and just your share, you should have two sets, right? Because you go to a fire, you come out of the fire all wet, and you continue to jump into those turnouts that are wet, full of carcinogens, and so on and so forth. Mr. Calderon just mentioned, we had a, the lifespan, the lifespan for a firefighter after retirement is three years. And we've already had four pass away of cancer that retired within the five. So we're doing a disservice by not able, being able to make smart purchases for the department. So I'm proposing is to reallocate the remaining 100,000 to buy a second set of turnouts that you need per NFPA standards and OSHA. So now the department will be better off, they'll be set for a few years with two sets of brand-new turnout so they can rotate pending fires or cleaning that is usually being done every six months to a year. The backup sets that we currently have now are ten years past the expiration date. The reflective, what you call the coating on it, is falling apart. So why not make a smart purchase and be able to use these monies to make that purchase and be able to be set off on PPE for the duration and then instead of buying another vehicle that's just going to sit in the parking lot and not be used? So that's where I'm coming with you with the stuff.
Okay, any other comments from council members?
Yeah, can you please clarify? This money was allocated to fire?
To PD.
To PD.
And then PD sat with Finance, Susan Mayor, and Mr. Acuna was there to clarify, hey, we have 200,000. No, that's not yours, that's fire's. So ended up being money that was allocated for the fire department. And again, there is a lot of questions of, you know, one department to another. Then now that, you know, we have Ms. Chaparro on board, she can come on and bring on and kind of see where we're at or what had happened to a lot of this no paper trail type of issues, right?
In the future, please, please include that. It wasn't reflective in the staff reports if money was for another department and then this one. It's true, happened just for transparency and so that we know and the public knows what's going on. And so, you know, that we can also make sure that we're being fair to both departments in what's happening. So I'm all for our staff having the uniforms and meeting OSHA standards and NFPA standards. But, Ms. Chaparro, find us 100,000 dollars to go back over there, okay? I know that this is something very common in our city, unfortunately, that the accounts are not up to date and the money's not where it should be. So that's, that'll come up at the end, another comment. So yes, please work with the city manager to figure that out. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
How much money was allocated to fire and police from the ARPA money?
From the ARPA money, I, I know there was an ask for, back in June, when I started, we got 80,000 for one fire utility vehicle, we got 20,000.
No, 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 I'm sorry. What was the total amount awarded to both departments?
What's my total amount?
Yeah, the total amount of ARPA money that was allocated to fire and police.
For fire and police? Well, there is a lot that was spent. I can come back to you because we did, they did, ARPA money did buy two ambulances. ARPA money did buy a vehicle. ARPA money did buy ESO software. So it can range into maybe a million between the both departments. I don't have the exact number, but we both had wish lists that every department did had when previous administration was here to ask, like Mr. Calderon said, the immediate need of what the department needs. So that can range between those, the both departments. I want to say maybe a million, close to a million. But again, they did make big purchases, like two ambulances. We had our SCBA packs, the breathing pack, that we only had eleven in service because we hadn't bought any in ten years. So from those monies, last year, probably spent another 340,000 from ARPA money. So you are looking at maybe over, over a million between both departments.
Yeah, I would like to have the know of how much money was spent by the police department and how much money was spent by the fire department.
Strictly ARPA.
Yes, strictly ARPA. Because we want to make sure that we're equitable between the departments. I know that in August of 2023, that there was a set of turnout spot already. And that's less than a year ago.
I know.
And the argument to get that back then was that the equipment that you guys had, or the fire department had, was 10 years old. And now we're going again saying that this second set of turnout is also 10 years old, so.
And those are facts.
So then it was, both, both have been 10 years old?
Yes. And, and, and the ask back then, and I'm being transparent right now. You had, you had eleven SCBAs, right? Self-contained breathing apparatus in service. You have nine guys on shift. We didn't have enough for any backups or any off-duty, off-duty personnel shows up. We didn't have enough because we hadn't purchased any in so long. Our turnouts from back then were 10-plus. Our backup sets were sitting at Station Two in Iconix, and the shelf life had already expired. So we're making, we're putting pieces together to give us two good sets. That's why, and this is not only the need of the PPE, there's needs for all the department. And I know you want to be equitable on other departments, but public safety should take precedence over other departments because those are your gentlemen that are going out there, the fire guys that are going out there, and not to take it away from any other department. But those are the tools that they need to make their job more effective and efficient.
Correct, but I want to make sure that we're equitable between the police and the fire department. Not, not any other ones, I'm sorry. No, I want to make sure that if we're giving to the fire department, we're also taking care of our police.
And, and me and Chief Orozco do, do have a discussion that we just talked about that we will be seeing where maybe, again, we got to look at these accounts to see where, oh, we might have some more available, but again, that's the line of communication that me and the chief are having, and I'll have it with the mayor.
And at this point, we do have two sets of turnout gear, correct?
Well, now we have two. One that's old and the one that's new. And this would put, if we move forward with the agenda item, then we'll have two good sets that would last us a good duration where, you know, I'm not coming back for more gear.
Okay. Chief Orozco, would you like to comment since you're on the table and your police department is involved in this discussion?
Obviously, I agree with the fire chief in reference that we both need the equipment. I think that the big issue right now is the finances of it is actually where it goes. Both myself and he go, and we ask, we get a list of what we have in our budget, and we're told we have, like, I was told I had 200,000, so I was like, okay, well, let's get the gear. And then when I go to, you know, actually go forward to purchase it, we're told it's not mine, it's the fire department's. One of the concerns that we spoke about was they're saying that these vehicles were, were there for ARPA. And back in 2022, we were approved by council to purchase eight vehicles. Those vehicles were eventually canceled, and then the city went to purchase six through ARPA. And then those were canceled because council wanted to look into EV vehicles at that time. So since that date, we've only purchased one vehicle with ARPA. And so, Fire Department was actually, back in, when ARPA was first given out, was given 300,000 dollars to purchase vehicles, and the PD was allotted 604,000 dollars to purchase vehicles. So I'm not arguing whether the 200,000 dollars is the fire department's or not. My question would be, where's the police department's money? Because 604,000 dollars, and we've only purchased one through ARPA. I know we purchased four back in with Chief Gerardo. And I consulted with him, plus Chief Serrano, as far as the purchases, because that's why I was told that they were purchased through Serrano. He never purchased any vehicles. And Chief Gerardo, when he purchased the four vehicles, he bought it through impact monies. So never through ARPA. Now I confirm that through today. So like I said, I'm not arguing that the, whether the money that he's using is his or not. The truth of the fact is, we don't know. So that's a kind of a homework that we're hoping Ms. Chaparro can sort out for us to find those missing monies and so we can get that going.
So I just want to, and I'll, and I'll let you speak on that. But Ms. Chaparro doesn't come on board until January sixth, and this needs to be, if it's going to be reallocated, it needs to be before December thirty-first. So Councilmember Calderon, will you can say something?
Well, I think both of you have had talks in both, in your lives because in, in, in the public service, equipment expires. And it's important to have the right equipment for the first responders because they take care of us when we're still, when we need them and so forth. And I, and I know that the last thing we want is to go back and forth. I think the chief and the fire chief here have good ideas. And you're going to see a lot of changes take place in place because we aren't going to bring those monies. And I know that your cars leave back through the sixty, the chief. So I know that you need cars, and we're going to look for something in Berkeley. That's why, and I wanted to tell the city manager, if these monies pop out, then you need to let it report now. I mean, the council will be good priorities. And hopefully, when we have the retreat, we'll have priorities that they will know that they're spending. And that is important. You guys are very important to this.
Yes, sir.
And it wasn't meant as a comment of one department being more important than the other. They both are. Public safety is like top priority. I just want to make sure that we are mindful when we're spending this money and that we're not taking from one to give to the other. So.
And that's why, that's why I wanted to, to, to use it for the turnout, right? Because if I get another vehicle and it's just going to sit there, 100,000 for another set of turnout, that's a big plus for the department. It's a morale booster. It's like another piece of new equipment that the guy can, hey, can swap out. I'm going to go into my new and not to my other new, you know? So it's these smart purchases that I think will help us out in the long run.
And I understand that, but at the same time, if I'm correct, we have new police officers coming on board, and how are we providing for their uniforms? You know, that's, you know, a big question. I want to make sure that if we're trying to expand our city, we have a very, you know, strong police and fire department and making sure that we're making the right decisions for both.
Okay, any other council members?
You have a comment. Obviously, it's going to be difficult for us to place this at a later date because December thirty-first is coming around the corner. But definitely, when you come on board, Finance Director, we need to somehow find what happened to the rest of the money and that the fire, that the police department deserves, obviously, because of their equipments and so forth. They're both vital to our community. Safety comes first. So I would have tabled it, but I'm not because we just don't have time.
Okay, with that said, I would just like to say that I believe everybody has a good, a good point of view in what you're saying. And, but the fact of the matter is that, in my opinion, this is, this equipment is needed regardless whether, you know, whether the police department also needs equipment, whether, you know, all these issues. This equipment is still needed for the proper function of the fire department. And just like the argument that's made with the parks where they say, we're going to have two incomplete parks, let's finish one. I, I think the same argument applies to, we would have two incomplete departments, let's finish one. So it is for this reason that I will make my decision. So I will read the item again, since there was a lot of discussion. Item number sixteen. Adopt Budget Amendment Resolution for Fund Number Two Twenty-Five, ARPA, for reallocation of 100,000 dollars from fire utility vehicles to purchase second set of personal protective equipment to meet NFPA standards. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Victor Legaskey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailanda.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item number seventeen. Appointment of primary representative and an alternate to the Imperial County Transportation Commission, ICTC Board. Before we have any public comment, I would like to give the opportunity to Mr. David Aguirre, am I correct?
Yeah.
Who is the executive officer of the ICTC so that he can let us know what this commission, what this board entails.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and honorable members of the council. Congratulations on being elected and re-elected in some cases. My name is David Aguirre, I'm the executive director of the Imperial County Transportation Commission. So this appointment, or let me go into a few brief details about what ICTC is. So ICTC is the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for the Imperial County. But not only that, we're also the public transit administrators. We also administer the Imperial Valley Resource Management Agency. We also administer the Imperial Valley Resource Management Agency in addition to the Service Authority for Freeway Emergencies. So there's a number of different agencies that live under the umbrella of ICTC. ICTC's board is comprised of an elected official from each of the seven cities, plus two members from the county and one member from the IID. We meet every fourth Wednesday of the month, and we discuss a variety of different topics, including transportation needs for the county as a whole, public transit, as I previously noted, and planning and infrastructure needs for the county as a whole. So just to give you a brief background of what ICTC is and what ICTC does for not just the city of Calixco, but also for the Imperial County as a whole.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Okay, at this time, the way I would like to, maybe an idea of our appointment is that any council member that wishes to be looked at for appointment, if, and a reason being is that we want to start appointing our committee members in a way that they can contribute to these committees. I don't think that just knowing what these committees do is enough. I think we always have to take into consideration the experience that we have to contribute to these committees so that, you know, our projects within Imperial County and especially within our city are, you know, are brought to fruition, and it just doesn't end up in various committee meetings. So for that reason, any council member that would like to be considered for appointment, you have the floor. I would like to, for you to let us know why you feel you're qualified and how you can contribute to this committee.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Thailenda?
I prepared something with my interests for this commission. I am deeply interested in serving on the Imperial Valley Transportation Commission because I'm passionate about advancing regional transportation initiatives that enhance the quality of life for our communities. I have firsthand experience addressing the transportation and infrastructure needs of our region and understand the importance of effective planning and collaboration to achieve impactful results. My professional experience in planning and development across multiple jurisdictions has provided me with a broad perspective and the technical expertise necessary to contribute efficiently to the commission's mission. In two of the jurisdictions I have worked, I had the privilege of serving on their Technical Advisory Committees, TAC, where I gained firsthand experience in the collaborative processes that drive transportation planning and funding decisions. As a member of TAC, I was actively involved in evaluating project priorities, coordinating with regional agencies, and ensuring that community needs were addressed through thoughtful planning and strategic allocation of resources. My background also includes significant contributions to securing grant funding for critical infrastructure projects, particularly for collector streets. I have been instrumental in preparing successful grant applications under programs like the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement, CMAC program, and the Surface Transportation Block Grants, STBG program. These efforts have directly resulted in improvements to local transportation, infrastructure contributing to safer and more efficient connectivity in the region. Additionally, I played a key role in the completion of the Transit Park Project for one of the jurisdictions that I previously worked for, involved in a federal transit administration, FTA, grant component. My experience navigating the complexities of federal grant requirements and coordinating with various stakeholders ensured the successful delivery of this project, which has been, which has since become a valuable community asset in one of our local jurisdictions. As a council member, I understand the critical role that transportation plays in the economic development and sustainability of our region. I am eager to bring my expertise in planning, grant writing, and project management to the Imperial Valley Transportation Commission. I believe my background aligns with the commission's goals, and I'm committed to supporting its efforts in addressing regional transportation challenges and advancing innovative solutions for the Imperial Valley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Thailenda. And just to make sure that we all understand, we're looking at the primary representative because there's also going to be an alternate. And then just to clarify, I saw in the back, in the backup information that one of them was the city's mayor. But if I understood correctly, I could always give up that seat?
Correct, yeah. It doesn't necessarily have to be the city mayor.
Okay.
It's whoever the city ultimately delegates.
Okay, so at this, thank you for that. At this time, any other council member would like to be considered for primary representative of the ICTC? Okay, with that said, I would, I move to appoint Councilmember Lisa Thailenda to be the primary representative for the Imperial County Transportation Commission. Do I have a second? Okay, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and now we would like to see if anybody else would like to be considered as the alternate to this commission? Okay. We'll make sure it's on your resume. Okay, so at... Okay. So at this time, the motion would be to appoint Councilmember Leno Calderon as the alternate for the Imperial County Transportation Commission Board. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Okay, second?
I second it.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Number 18, Appointment of Delegate Member and Alternate Member to the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, 2025 Regional Conference and General Assembly on May 1st and 2nd, 2025, in Palm Desert, California. Would anybody like to be... Oh, he's from SCAG. I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Good evening. David Salgado, I'm the Senior Government Affairs Officer with the Southern California Association of Governments. Congratulations on all your success in your election runs. I am a Government Affairs Officer with SCAG. SCAG is the largest metropolitan planning organization in the country. We cover six counties, 191 cities, approximately 190, 110, 190 million people. We cover the counties of Imperial, Riverside, San Bernardino, Orange, Ventura, and Los Angeles. We, as I mentioned, we partner with different agencies such as ICTC, who are regional transportation planning authorities. We conduct a four-year planning cycle to create a regional transportation plan on behalf of the region that is basically developed from help from all of your cities. Every year, we hold an annual conference in Palm Desert where we convene all those cities and all of our members, all of our stakeholders to understand what SCAG has been up to over the past year, what we're looking forward to in the coming years, where we are with different initiatives. Some of our main goals are aligned with sustainability, transportation. We do conduct the regional housing needs assessment on an eight-year cycle. And so that's another component of our work that takes place at SCAG. There's a lot going on. It's a dynamic agency. And so this appointment that you have before you is just to appoint your delegate for this annual general assembly and regional conference in Palm Desert. And so each city is provided an opportunity to provide a delegate to meet and convene. We have a great conference lineup for the general assembly where we, like I said, we cover a lot of the topics that we're going through or covering at the moment. And so that's basically what this component is. We have other, we have an 87-member governing board made up of elected officials from throughout those six counties. Those officials are selected through a different process separate from this general assembly process. So each city will take action to appoint one, one member and an alternate to attend the general assembly in May. It's May 1st and May 2nd in Palm Desert. But I would encourage all of you to attend. You're all invited to attend the general assembly in May to see what SCAG has going on. You're a dues-paying member of SCAG, and so I'm here to support you in any of your efforts that you have going on as a part of the regional transportation planning. So that's the item you have before you, and I'll leave some cards so you can reach out if you have any questions regarding any other opportunities that SCAG has available to you in your communities.
Okay, thank you, sir. So using the same reasoning behind appointments that we used in the previous item, would any council members like to be considered for appointment to be the delegate member for SCAG?
I don't have a...
A resume?
A resume that I would like to be appointed. I think it's important, this is important to be a part of. Obviously, you also be working with ICTC. It looks like it. So I'm up for the challenge, and hopefully I get appointed for this commission.
Okay. Okay, anybody else, though, would like to be considered? No? Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. There's a motion? Okay, and we have a second. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and just answering the second question on item number 18, to select the alternate member, anybody would like to be the alternate?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, so everybody has something to do.
Whether you like it or not.
Okay, so... Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second to, for Councilmember Marquez to be the alternate member for the SCAG, alternate delegate. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, roll call?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 19, recommend, recommended the approval to purchase the Johnson Controls Fire Protection Fire Alarm Panel to replace the non-functioning Simplex 4020 Fire Alarm Control Panel. And Chief of Police, you have the floor.
What we're speaking about is alarms that controls all jails themselves in our police department. By state law and federal law, we're required to have a functioning fire alarm. What this does is alerts people inside the building that there's a fire inside the jail. That way, people can get out for their safety. The current alarm is as old as the building. It became non-functional, and every year, we get inspected three times, twice by the county and once by the state. It's a requirement that we must have it. We were having issues with budgetary, but in the last budget report, one of the amendments was to allocate the monies for this fire alarm to be replaced. After the budget was approved, we went out to Johnson Control, which bought out Simplex. So it's the only company that provides that fire alarm. And they quoted us for $39,460.86. They said that if we purchased it within this, before the end of the year, they would honor the previous estimate that they gave us, which is what is before you for the purchase price of $35,674.26. So it's a $4,000 savings if we purchase this now versus next month.
Okay, any comments or any comments from council members? Okay, do you have a second? Okay, so motion by Councilmember Calderon, second by Councilmember Thailenda. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number 20, Approval of a Resolution to amend City Council Annual Rotation Policy.
I motion to approve.
I second it.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 21, Discussion and Potential Direction Regarding Commission Policies, Procedures, and Practices. Before we open it for public comment, I just want to make sure that we understand what this item entails. And it's mainly a brainstorming session here because we understand that our current commissions and the way that the city ordinance states, they're not functional. They're not functioning. They meet, they meet too far apart. And sometimes, you know, commissioners are absent. You don't get a forum. We don't get business done. And when we understand that most of the commissions, when we do have functional commissions, a lot can get done. So this item is to propose to, to update the ordinance on commissions and also to see which commissions, you know, identify that the commissions are, you know, how they should be, identify if any commissions should, you know, be removed, maybe, and identify if any commissions should be added. So I was going to, before, so that's just a brief introduction before I actually go to some of the proposals and allow the rest of the council members to give some input so that we can work on this, get, I believe, the minimum days that we have to modify ordinance. I think it was 45 days. So we want to work on this fast so that we can be done in 45 days and get our commissions back to work. But most importantly, that they're functional, that they have the right people, and that they make sense. So the people, the commissioners that are there, there are people that can contribute, not just attend the meeting, but that their contributions can help lead the city forward. So with that said, do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Jose Inojosa?
Good evening. Jose Inojosa, 1056 F. Torres. On behalf of the Heartstone La Jolla Palms community, I would like to congratulate the new council, Madam Mayor, and our community for voicing for change. And I just wish today that this, the new commissions and the new council take into consideration our community, La Jolla Palms, Heartstone. We've been fighting for a part, Mrs. Cunningham. We don't, we don't have a part. My daughter's here. She was supposed to have quinceañera at our, at our community. She was supposed to swim. She was supposed to play tennis there. We have vacant land. So hopefully, you get our, our items into the commissions, into the Finance Commission, into the Planning Commission, into Parks and Recreation Commission, into every commission that, and any, and any and all commissions that this community deserves. We paid $15 million in bonds that were misguided, were misused. So finance, to our new Finance Director, we need to, we need to, you know, get in line and get this new council that we voted for to hear us and to make our voices be heard in the city and try to fix this because this will affect our city in a major, major way. So if we move forward, as I've, we've talked to our HM City Manager, and to Mr. Legaspi, and to Mrs. Diana Noricumbo, and we've, you know, we've talked and we've, we've tried to understand, but it's a matter of you guys making the right decisions. Are we going to start with forensic audit? What are we going to do? Are we going to try and find who's guilty, or are we going to fix this? So thank you, and God bless you. And hopefully, this coming year, we can come to fruition with Digis and many other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Inojosa. Do you have other public comment?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Patricia Orenya, 1277 Topeka Court. In reference to item 21, one of the things that I think that the councils look at in terms of the commissions, that we opt not to get paid to come to these meetings. We were given a form to get a $50 stipend per meeting, so that was four times in a year. But as commissioners, if we're going to serve on this commission, we're going to serve at the will of the council. The people that are going to be coming, becoming your commissioners are supposed to be... The people that are going to be coming, uh, becoming your commissioners are supposed to be your ears and eyes for all these issues that these residents are bringing forth to you. So that you can be, we can be, uh, the coun- the commissioners can be the, the advocates, not only for the division that we, that, that they're going to be representing, but also the city council. So, when you look at your, you know, your policies, your bylaws, um, look at people that are interested in serving the entire community and not just for specific, um, purposes. So, thank you. Congratulations again to all this board. I like the smoothness of this council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Okay, so I'll bring this back to our, um, council and I, this time I'm going to go first. Normally I'll go last, but only because, like I said, um, I just want to, um, put it out there like a brainstorm. It's nothing set in stone. I know some people will like the idea, some people won't. But, um, currently we have a library board of trustees commission, a community services commission, a planning commission, a personnel commission, a measure H commission, an economic development and financial advisory commission, and a community and police advisory commission. I would propose and I will be proposing to add a CFD commission. And that CFD commission will, will oversee, um, the funding that is collected in tax revenue by the three CFDs we have in our city, um, so that the stakeholders, the, the people that are paying these taxes have a say and, and know directly where their taxes are going and know and contribute on how their taxes are going to be spent. With that said, there's a lot of fighting with the Cordova Park. And the Cordova Park, um, it is a public park, it is public property, but it is being maintained by a CFD. Um, and unfortunately, there's nobody, um, uh, representing. Um, you know, you have a plan, people buy their homes, people buy their properties based on a plan, and then those plans don't get respected and that needs to stop. Uh, and that, that way of operating with, with, with the rest of the CFDs. We need to go back and we need to, uh, appoint, um, the people, the stakeholders that are being affected by the bad practices in the past and find a solution. So, that's one of my recommendations on when we develop, when we make these changes to the, these commissions, um, so that we can find solutions. Like I said, my proposal is if there's a park within a CFD, then that park is part of the discussion within that commission. And it would be pulled out from the community services commission, that would be an exception, so that it is, um, looked at by the CFD that pays for the maintenance of that park. And another option that was brought up by, um, um, our new planning, uh, director, which I would like to have considered, is the possibility of removing the planning commission. Because we want to, uh, develop and we want to remove the, the red tapes. And unfortunately, um, you know, sometimes the planning commissions are those red tapes and unless you have qualified staff in that position and you're talking about staff that know about actual planning, then, you know, sometimes it's just wasting time and, uh, it's a hurdle. Um, I know that he comes from the city of Santee. They did remove their, uh, their planning commission eight years ago. And they're, I believe, the fastest-growing city in that area and they have a lot of development because they removed that red tape. So, there's eight years going on. Those are my proposals. And now I'd like to open it to the rest of the councilmembers.
I did mention it earlier, I love the idea of the planning commission. Um, but, uh, I'd like to see the police, um, commission, uh, take more on. So, traffic commission, because we don't have a traffic commission. So, when we have concerns from the public, they act in that capacity and that they're able to actually make decisions on behalf of the council. So, um, in addition, so maybe, we're going to have to maybe rename it, uh, a code enforcement aspect to it as well. So, that's, and, and that's something I'd like to see. Uh, I'd also like to see, um, monthly meetings. I think that's been resonating with a lot of the commissioners who are currently on there. They want to serve. I also think that, um, elimination of the stipend potentially. Thank you, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to also add, uh, what Lisa and the mayor have mentioned. Uh, interviews, uh, for the past five, six months that we've been, uh, councilmembers. Every time we go to commission meetings, it's the only thing, the only commission meeting that's vibrant is the committee service. Uh, planning doesn't get together and, and I do agree, I do concur that they need to be, eliminated is such a harsh word, right? They need to be removed. Uh, in order for us to go forward, we have a lot of these businesses that want to come in and then if we are waiting for planning commission to get together and they don't get together, it doesn't happen. So, I think that is such a great idea to, uh, make that change. Uh, and like I said, maybe it's a, a small interview to see what person is coming in, what person is truly there to assist the city of Callexico. Because the ones that, um, there's a lot of them that are out there, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing and we're missing out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you touched on, oh, yeah, and it's very important to say that, um, I forgot to mention and I'll bring it back to you right now, um, councilmembers, that the, the elimination of the planning, it doesn't mean you bypass any planning, um, you, you just, uh, there's the, the recommendation, um, the free recommendation that we got was that, um, there's a certain threshold where, where the planning director approves. And then after that threshold passes, then the acting planning commission would be this council. Um, and that way we eliminate that red tape. Okay, so, uh, any councilmember would like to add?
I'm also in agreement with, uh, what was said prior. I think that the committees do need to, I mean, the commissions need to, uh, meet more often in order to get through the projects more efficiently. And once again, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Coin, for your recommendation on the planning commission.
Okay, councilman?
My comment is, uh, during my campaign, there was, I came to these meetings and so forth. And a lot of these meetings were canceled with no justification. So, what I'm recommending, if we are going to have these committees, that we hold those, that are responsible for holding these meetings accountable. They should be accountable to us because they're actually, there are hires and years and these people are volunteering their time. And there shouldn't be, or at least there should be a legitimate reason why these commission meetings are being canceled. And they should be called to us if that's the case. And when, it's going to be, uh, postponed to, and so forth. And it's happened a lot and I hope that, uh, I don't want to discourage our commissioners because we do really have a lot of work ahead of us. And again, you're the ones who bring the ideas to us and, and the solutions to some of the problems. So, again, um, if you're responsible for having one of these, uh, commissions, please do so. Because, uh, we should be holding these accountable. That's all.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, with that said, and I just noticed that, because I was going off of, um, the code, I didn't notice the business improvement on it. Is it not on the code?
I didn't find a section on the municipal code for the business improvement.
Okay, so then that one would also be included into, um, what we're doing, so, or what we propose on doing. So, um, so going back, it's brainstorming possible action if we want to take any action or I would recommend, you want to speak?
Oh, what was the name of the, um, committee you had proposed?
CFD.
CFD.
Yes. So, um, just, if you can just take, um, I guess, the, the, the direction and if we all approve, would be for, uh, the city manager to work with whoever is necessary to update our code. I imagine it's, um, our attorney. Um, and to reflect, um, that the commissions should meet on a monthly basis. Um, and, uh, then we can work with someone on, on calendaring them in every, every month um, so that they have access to our chambers, um, as well as...
Well, have Mr. Coin have like six agenda items for the February, January fifteenth meeting, if you can.
Oh, okay.
Don't scare him.
And, uh, so, so it would be to make them meet monthly, um, to also, um, eliminate, or whatever the word is, um, any commissioners that are not attending them, but do it, um, immediately. I don't know, one or two, um, give us a proposal, times that, that they miss, um, especially if they're affecting the quorum and we're not getting business done. And, um, the elimination of the stipend for our commissions. I think the only one that was getting a stipend was planning and they wouldn't be correct, am I correct? Or they weren't getting a stipend?
No, I think, I think all the, all the commissions were offered a stipend.
Oh, okay, elimination of stipend.
No.
In the municipal code, I believe it's only planning that gets a fifty-dollar, um, and parks and recs.
Oh, Parks and Rec was getting it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Everybody's getting money? Okay, well, we're saving some money there, so let's go. You do it for the love of your city. And then, um, oh, and we would have to set interviews, maybe look at the application and make sure that, that we're asking the questions, the right questions of applicants.
So, are you setting a deadline for applications, interviews with the applicants? Um, try to bring a first reading, correct, uh, city clerk by January? Second reading, thirty days, and try to get new commissions appointed by mid-February?
We would want to do the fastest that we can. So, if the minimum, if the minimum is forty-five days, let's shoot for the forty-five days.
Okay.
So that we can get them because we have a lot of work to do. And, um, I don't know, do I have to do a motion for that direction or?
Um, as long as you get direction from the council, which we have received, that's sufficient.
Okay. So, with that, we will move. Okay. Yes, they already have to apply. Um, but we're just going to revise the application, make sure that it has all the questions that we want to know and then we're also, they're also going to be interviewed so that we get the most, um, qualified applicants that can contribute to their commissions. And, and the whole point is that they're going to be doing the work for us. We, um, need to trust that they're the right, um, um, people for those commissions so that when they come in with a recommendation, we have no doubt or very little doubt as to what they're recommending and, and moving forward. Because then we have this back and forth or then they're just making recommendations, but, but no action is being taken. So, we want to be able to make sure that, that we trust those commissioners, um, and their recommendations. The applications are going to be revised and then, um, they're not going to be put out until they're official, right? After the, at least the forty-five days, then they would be given out to start, since we're updating the code. Am I correct, city attorney?
Any, any code requires two readings and then takes effect thirty days after.
Okay, thirty, and so we're planning on the first reading to be January fifteenth? The next council meeting, right? City manager?
To have the first reading for the change of the ordinance, thirty days, and then bring back to council, I believe, after the fact, correct, Carla?
Correct. I do want to comment on the planning commission, that one may take some work. Um, that's, it's not, you'd have to probably go through your entire code. That's going to be a longer project on that one, just because it's, it's, you would have to revise, um, what approval is going to be administrative. It's going to, that's going to be a, a, a project in and of itself, just to kind of, I'm just...
And I think, um, future director Coin, yeah, he already, he knows the way, so he'll show you the way.
Yeah, he'll have it ready, right? Okay.
Cut and paste.
Oh, if you have a draft board, just makes it easy.
Yeah, just copy there.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, any more comments?
Yes, we do. We have Carmen Estrada.
Okay.
Buenas tardes, bueno, buenas noches, tengo una sor- me estoy sorprendida de lo que están diciendo. Yo fui comisionada y nunca se me pagó unos cincuenta dólares al mes. Digo, en las juntas, yo quisiera pedirles que si hay un reembolso, yo sí lo quiero porque necesito ocho rollos de alambre para la seguridad de los niños y si hay reembolso, que se compren esos rollos de, de, de alambre para terminar el cerco. No sabías hasta ahorita. Y yo no sé por qué, no sé, yo hubiera dicho los regalos pero ahora ya no. Si hay un reembolso, hay que comprar esos rollos de alambre para la seguridad de los niños. Gracias.
Okay, gracias. Moving on to informational items. Okay, so item number twenty-two, receive and file committee services commission minutes for regular meeting of September eleven, twenty twenty-four. Okay. All right, future, oh my God, I forgot to ask. We're almost done, uh, motion to extend the meeting, um, since it's past nine-thirty. Any second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tailenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon? Motion passes.
Okay, and, uh, we have left our future agenda items, so we will start with, uh, Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Like mentioned earlier, let's, uh, let's really push for the citations for those that are throwing trash in the alleyways and whoever's throwing trash in front of their businesses. Also, um, regarding to what was mentioned earlier and what, uh, Councilmember Calderon had stated, uh, anything, you would, you know, need to go around and check on the parking, park facilities to see what's, what's working, what's not working, what's broken and what needs to be fixed. Uh, and another thing, uh, that's, that's about it. Also, I would like to invite, uh, people that attend tomorrow at the Comandante Memorial Library's Christmas festivity between five and seven. And second of all, uh, also, Mr. Solano, I guess he left, uh, he needs volunteers, correct, Miss Orenia? For, uh, Rockwood Park, the painting, uh, facility, general area, this coming Saturday, eight o'clock in the morning. So, he needs volunteers. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tailenda?
So, uh, this was, um, previously, uh, requested to the city manager, um, for the forensic audit, but, uh, and it had a first and a second a few months ago, I believe it was in August. Um, but I just wanted to ask if he could bring that up and collaborate with the finance director to formulate the RFP, um, because that's what was pending. Um, and if it could come to council so we could review the RFP to make sure that it encompasses the departments that were, um, requesting to have the forensic audit done. Um, and hopefully if that could be done in January or February, you know, you're just starting, but...
You might start a little sooner.
And then, uh, another, another request, um, maybe in February or March, if we could have a workshop regarding building fees and impact fees, um, with the community and, um, local developers and investors to discuss where we stand and what they want to see in order to bring business here and the options we have to use those tools to create incentives for people to come and develop here. So, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Marquez?
I would like to make a request. Um, as mentioned before, uh, the downtown area is looking pretty ugly. I want to make sure that we're checking on the alleyways because I have driven by, um, during the day and even at night and the gates are open. So, I don't know if there's any way that we can ma- be making sure that, you know, maybe somebody checks on it at least once?
I can have enforcement go out there and check, but as well, it's the business owners that are opening that we should hold accountable as well. But I'll have court enforcement start sending notice of violations if they're open after hours. We do have republic services that go twice a week because the amount of influx of cardboard now because it's the holidays, you're getting more packages or whatnot, but they shouldn't be like that because their republic services goes twice a week in the downtown area just for cleanup, but those gates should not be open. So, I'll, I'll get with court enforcement so I can get out, get them.
And, and the second request as well, for the downtown area, um, the trashcans are always overflowing. So, especially right now, I mean, we're trying to promote our city, we're trying to bring businesses in. Well, and right now, it's the right time of the year to get the, um, extra monies coming in. So, we want to make it a little bit presentable. If we can help with the trashcan situation, that would be greatly appreciated. And with the alleys being taken care of, hopefully there's nobody, you know, using that as a restroom area.
that as a restroom area. Thank you.
Councilmember Calderon?
You wanna be here all night? I have a long list. No, mine is simple, and this is something that should be done, should've been done many, many years ago. You go down 98, 111, whatever, there is a lot of dead trees, and I think I would talk to Mr. Monteras, if the tree is dead, cut it down. I'm in the process of speaking to Ms. Ocamia and Mr. Bacheco, so we'll see if we can get some trees and replace this old tree there. Just there, they look, I mean, they're a fire hazard, they're a safety issue to our community. Also, I don't know if you know, on Second Street, we have 18 20 conches. Couple are dead, they need to be replaced. Not only do they need to be replaced, they need to paint. And I, like, I sat down and I kinda gave the picture to Mr. Monteras, and where you're coming from, in Higali, you see Second Street. And we should clean the conches and light them up with solar lights, so when our potential customers come in, they see that it's a lit city, something going on in that town. And again, we can paint the curves, the red curve, the green curve, whatever you have to paint, give it some color, so we can start a new and fresh way to collect.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, I did receive a request in, in reference to some funding to be allocated. There's gonna be, I believe, continuing work on Rodriguez Park, and I know that the commissioners did send in a request via email to Ms. Falomir, and I wanna make sure that this is taken care of, because I think it's a time constraint for the carpenters' union who's donating their time. Thank you. Okay?
I do have one more question for the city manager. And I know it's already worked, but I wanna know the dates, but most important, I want the citizens to know. What's the status on the pavement for the library, community center, parking lots I'm talking about, and also the police station, fire station?
So, Public Works has put this out there, I think it was middle of October, September, for, for bid, for having those services conducted. I know the library was having some issues with their sewer and plumbing inside the library, so they didn't wanna start on that area, because they're gonna tear up into the pavement. Once Ms. Falomir gets back from vacation, I would have that staff report ready for you for the following meeting, because I did provide her some plans for PD, as far as when the fire station got torn down, all the water lines that are running through both facilities, so that way, the engineering firm that's coming in can get that thing done. So, I gave her those plans maybe a month ago. Recreation as well, but I'll get that for you for the next meeting, and I'll give you an update and a timeline as to when those projects should be complete. The fire department, I'm still working out how to get some funding. I know Chief Orozco has some ideas as well, some impact fees or whatnot that we can use, so we can redo the parking lot inside the courthouse area, but it's still in the works.
And I think, and all of them are important to me, because it's a safety factor, but I think our senior citizens should take care of it, I mean, because it's a matter of time before something risks themselves. I know if you had an opportunity to clarify, it's all there, you need a four by four to redo it, so, you need it to be fixed.
Yeah, I try to visit the departments, I go vent to them and get away from the office, and I'll go to different departments and...
It's not regular, council. Thank you.
Okay. I would like you to, is this a wish list, right? Christmas, for Christmas, I would like you to upgrade or update our website with the new, you know, the board, the new council members that are here. Also, update our social media, have someone use it more, have more communication with our citizens, let them know what's going on. I don't know if you have a person assigned to that, but I think we need to start working on that, because we're going to be doing a lot of things, and we would like our, the community members to be aware of that. So, on our website and social media. Public Works, Councilmember Calderon actually got, he had suggested, or he saw an idea that they're using in other cities where they have an app for reporting graffiti, trash, you know, stuff on the sidewalks, and our citizens can just go in, click, and say, "There's trash here," and it would go to Public Works, and then they would have to go out and send someone. Currently, in one of our meetings, we had asked the chief of police to have his police officers, since they're out patrolling anyway, to be our eyes and ears on graffiti and on trash, and let Public Works know in the meantime, but I think we should use technology at its max and look into that, and maybe involve your IT person, so he can see if we can incorporate some type of app for reporting, for like citizen reports. Well, I'll leave this for the end. Again, emphasize cleanup. We can't, if, just because we can't start developing yet, or we haven't started, we haven't streamlined the process, and we're gonna have a lot of work in January, but it doesn't mean we can't be clean. So, we could always look out after ourselves, and I think we need to emphasize to the Public Works Department that they need to be cleaning out there every day, and they are, I see them. So, let's just, let's go downtown, because that seems to be the place that every day gets trash, so they should be stopping every day to downtown, not just pick up the trash, but, you know, do a, maybe sweep it more often with the sweeper. Let me see, for recreation department, I have some work for you through the city manager. I would like you to start working on a calendar of events for the year 2025, and I want you to, I would like you to bring back as an option, so that we can review most or all of the, of the community events that we had in the past that people really like to have, especially the Christmas parade. And I think we had mariachi festival and all kinds of other stuff that we were doing that people really enjoy, so I want it brought up in January, because we have a whole year to work on it. I don't know why we didn't have a Christmas parade. Everybody in this city was disappointed. I don't know the reasons, it's in the past, but it's gonna, we're gonna have a Christmas parade in 2025, and many other events. Let me see, chief of police, please, by the next meeting through the city manager. City manager, I would like you to ask the chief of police to have an update on the stray cat plan, on the graffiti enforcement, on personal properties, and also ensure that we are, this is not for him anymore, but this is for you, that we have the 72-hour of our property that's painted, and I'll give you a 72-hour notice. The community center has graffiti on its signs and in our front, so if we can get that painted. I would like you to ask the chief of police to get that MOU working. I know, I know he's already working on that, and very excited about the detox center. It's free, and we would like to start getting people out to that detox center as soon as we can. And also, just, I need to appoint a hearing officer soon, so whatever it is we need to do, so that we can get those citations paid. So, if nobody else has anything to say, I, motion to adjourn.
Yes, this is happening.
We don't have public comment right now, I'm sorry.
No, no, just I want to say thank you.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Chair?
Mayor Diana Noricomo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tailinda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 9:52 PM.